Okay, it's 5:30, so we'll go ahead and call our November 10th, 2020 work session to order, and I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Mr. Chambers?
Here.
Mr. Mullins? Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Shinholster?
Here.
Ms. Walden?
Here.
Dr. Lee?
Here.
We do have a quorum present, so at this time, I'm going to turn it over to our wonderful city manager, Mr. Hank Griffin. And it is yours.
Well, thank you, and I'm going to turn it over to General Caldwell and his staff from GMC to give us their annual update as they do each year and as we look forward to each year. And so, General, I'll turn things over to you.
Thank you, Hank. Listen, first of all, let me just express our appreciation to all of you all for your support during these last five months that the institution's been operating. And we, you know, we are very grateful for the support from the city, verbal presence that you've been giving to us, and it's made possible for us to be where we are today. And I'll walk you through a little of that, and then I'm going to ask Tiffany Bain to talk about specifically the junior college within Milledgeville, and then Colonel Pam Grant to talk about the prepory school. I'll start off, if you would, Tiffany, first slide, please.
You should be able to share now, Tiffany. Okay?
Okay, and so, as we go through, Tiffany, go to the first, next one, please. Here's the key thing. On June 1st, because we were allowed to do so, we went ahead and went back to in-seat education. We never provided remote education thereafter in the prep school. So on June 1st, we went back in-seat, we taught summer school, did it very successfully through the month of June. We started bringing in all our technology in June and July to really help us be able to operate safely there. We ran all our summer programs through July, and then we opened up for business when schools started in August, and Pam can talk to you about that. And at the end of July, we started bringing back our cadets and the junior college corps of cadets, putting them in the barracks, and obviously started and have been operating ever since. So Georgia Military College has never done 10% remote, 50% in-seat, or any of that stuff. We're 100% in-seat, been doing it from day one on June 1st. We've never gone back to remote, and we've done it very, very successfully. Almost, I mean, and everybody can tell you, I think we're on our second full week now of zero COVID cases out of 2,000 people that are operating daily on our campus here in Milledgeville and across the state of Georgia. We've only got two other cases out of 14 campuses. So, I mean, it's, there's a lot that we did that we will talk about in a second. The big thing we did for our COVID response, next slide, please, is we went ahead and came up with a five-step program. And those five steps collectively together has provided us a safe and secure environment in which to conduct education. One in of themselves is insufficient. It takes all five steps, and we're absolutely convinced of it, and we see it daily in the results on our campuses. But the first step is, if you have a question about your health, that please don't come on our campus. Don't, don't come to prep school, don't come to the junior college, don't come to any event, just please stay out, please, you know? And we saw a lot of absences, excused absences in the month of August, and that was great. That's what we were seeking to do. If you had a question, please just don't come on our campus. We don't want to get other people sick. And it worked very, very well. Then we say, if you got a fever, please don't come on the campus. And again, we lowered it to 100 degrees, and if you're 100 degrees, we ask you to please leave the campus. In order to do that, we went out and bought the high-speed, if you haven't seen them, they're on every one of our campuses across the state of Georgia. We spent just over about a half a million dollars of our operational reserve to start buying all this technology. But we installed it, and we've got, it looks like a metal detector system you walk through, you put your wrist up to, read your temperature, we have it in every building, you take it all day long. Again, it's just another step. If you're sick, don't come. If you have a temperature, we don't want you. And then the next thing is the enhanced cleaning and new technology, again, putting ionizers in at a cost of $250,000 across every building and facility we have across the state of Georgia. We're absolutely convinced by constantly killing the COVID that could perhaps enter into the air makes an enormous difference. But we, it's a huge investment, but it's paying off tenfold back in terms of we're not seeing COVID cases. The next one, courtesy and respect, you know, as Colonel Pam Grant likes to say, we don't mandate masks, but we do mandate character. And out of respect and courtesy to others who are wearing a mask, you should put your facial covering on. We do mandate that you must have on your possession at all times while on our campus a facial covering. And then out of respect and courtesy, congested areas, clogged areas, formations, anything where there's people around you and you can't have a six-foot separation, you absolutely should, out of respect and courtesy, put your facial covering on. And then the last one is a lot of self-responsibility and etiquette to others. And you can read over on the far right-hand side, there what we put out and gave, you know, all of our students, those are our five steps in our program, that all five have to be fully implemented in order for us to be successful in combating COVID, and it's going incredibly well. Just couldn't be more pleased. Okay, next slide. This is how we look as an institution, not here in Milledgeville as an institution, 13 campuses around the state, and then, of course, our global online college. So 14 entities with a total enrollment this past year of just over 16,000 college students. All right, next slide, please. Across the state of Georgia, this is what we look like. The in-seat college students are those who are 100% only in-seat, then there's those who are only online, and then there's those who do some online and some in-seat. And when you start adding it all together, you know, you start seeing the numbers of about 16,000 there. We're almost all Georgia residents here, only 4% are from out of state of Georgia. And again, our transfer and graduation rate, which we're real proud of, is 55% of our students who start with us will transfer or graduate and move on to a four-year institution. We are still a minority-serving institution, an MSI, or as the Department of Education, the federal government classified us, we're PBI, predominantly black institution, because our minority representation within our student body. And then you can see, we have a lot of females. A lot of people don't realize GMC, Georgia Military College, which in the mid-1960s was an all-white institution, is today a predominantly black institution, is recognized by the federal government. So, small tidbit, you just come down, look at our college corps of cadets, it's more than evident when you see them just here on our own campus, who we predominantly serve in the state of Georgia, and we're very proud of that, what we do for those who come from disadvantaged and less fortunate situations, that have the opportunity to be able to go and attend college and to get their first two years done, and they move on to a four-year institution in the state of Georgia. Next slide, please. This is how much we get on scholarships this past year. You can see our average yearly fee and tuition. A lot of colleges don't show all their fees. If you include all of our fees with our tuition, that's what it'll cost you to take, you know, a normal credit hour loan and graduate in two years. But you can see the type of student, again, we're, we're serving, they predominantly all qualify for some sort of financial aid. We have about 60% of our students who are 100% pale-qualified, meaning they come from significantly disadvantaged families financially, and they need the help and assistance. Okay, next slide. Again, we're pretty proud of what we've been able to achieve over the last 10 years. You can see what we've been doing in terms of really working hard to provide the opportunities by giving free tutoring to any student who wants it, keeping our class sizes very small, working very closely with our students, putting in a lot of checks and balances through some systems called like Starfish and others that help us use full technology to assist and enable our students to, early on, identify if they're being challenged and not wait until it is a problem to start intervening and helping them out. But we're real proud of where we've gotten with that. Okay, next slide, please. And this is my last one, but just so you know what we have asked from the state of Georgia. We went out and briefed the governor in September, and we provided to his staff these three items. Our faculty and staff are in the Georgia Teacher Retirement System, the TRS. Every other four-year college and institution and parochial school receives full reimbursement for whatever you pay in, you, the school pays in the TRS. We do not. In fact, there's a shortfall every year of about almost $1 million. And so, we asked the governor, we said, "Look, Governor, you don't give us a dime to operate this college, junior college. We don't get one penny from the state of Georgia. What we do get is some funding to help us pay our portion of the TRS share, but even that is not the full amount. And so, we're just asking you to please give us enough to ensure that all of the TRS requirements are paid for, and then, of course, from there, we, we pick up everything else ourselves, salaries, maintenance, sustainment, and et cetera." And then, we have asked this year, there's, there's going to be about $4 million in MRR, maintenance, repair, restoration, we need to do on the Milledgeville campus to the state property there. And there's, we felt very comfortably telling the state we would like them to help with about $1 million of that cost this next year, and so, we've laid that out. So those are our two priority funding requests that we've made to the state of Georgia. And then the last one is, if, again, I know we, all the budgets are very tight, the governor gave us an indication, probably not this year, but submitted again for the next year. We still, at some point, do see that if we could build a center for the education, the arts here in Milledgeville with about an 800-person seating capacity, we think it could really be just an enormous economic boom and attraction here in the middle of Georgia, here in Baldwin County, and especially in the city, if, if they would help us build that. We've been raising money to pay for half of it, and we've asked if they would pay for the other half. Again, we'll see. We do not have any hopes based on what the governor told us in his office for this year, but he left us with the idea that it would be something they would consider the following year. When I say, so this budget next May would not include, we don't think, any money for that, but we would hope it does for the other two items. We've talked both to Senator Burt Jones and Representative Rick Williams, and have told them those are our two priority items that directly affect us here in Milledgeville and in Baldwin County, and we would like their support on both of them to help make those happen. We're hoping the governor may just put it in his budget, but if he doesn't, then we'll have to work with the General Assembly when it convenes in January and ask them to make that and add it to their budget process. So with that, if you have any questions you want to ask me about the, the college at large, I can take it. Otherwise, I'll ask Tiffany Bain, who's our Assistant Director of the campus here in Milledgeville, to go ahead and give you an update on the campus here in Milledgeville.
Thank you, sir. Oh, I think we've got a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Very, very curious about, did you say your numbers are two incidents with the virus on your campus?
Right now, for the last two weeks, we haven't had any COVID cases at all.
Well, tell me more about the equipment. What type of equipment, and is it something that you use constantly or what?
Yeah, the, what we, they're, they're called ionizers, and we spent a quarter of a million dollar buying the equipment and then installed it ourselves. But they, what they do is, they, within 10 minutes, they kill 84% of any kind of virus, especially COVID. They were built for, to make sure it killed COVID, but they'll kill 84% of it within 10 minutes, and 99% of COVID within 30 minutes. And so, all of our air systems in every single building, classroom, facility, gymnasium, any place where you walk inside, we put these ionizers in those facilities so that if COVID were to be introduced into there, the possibility of it being transmitted now dramatically decreases because it's getting killed automatically through the air purification system.
That's great.
The other thing we did, we spent tens of thousands of dollars buying these infrared wands. Now, there's all kinds of wands you can buy, but the ones we bought are the kind that are so high-powered, you really are required to wear glasses and gloves and using them. But our teachers have them, and so, especially like in our computer labs and our scientific labs, chemistry labs, so every time a class leaves, the teachers put the glasses on and their gloves on, and you just have to swipe over and back, and it kills 99.8% of any bacteria or virus that may exist on those items. And so, they can wand chairs very quickly, desk, so it doesn't require massive amounts of chemicals and cleaning teams, and teachers can just do it in their own classrooms. Each wand's about $400, but we bought them, and I think we're probably 150, we purchased now almost 200. We just keep buying them. As a faculty member or staff member requests them, we buy them one.
That's great.
So that they just keep cleaning the surfaces where our students will be.
That's great. Good job, good job. Thank you, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Tiffany?
Thank you, sir. All right. I am excited to share with you all a little bit about the Milledgeville campus. We have had a very successful academic year, and we are enjoying being back and being open, as General Caldwell talked about. So here at the Milledgeville College and across our junior colleges across the state, we offer 28 associate degree programs and five bachelor's of applied science degree programs. Our students' favorite and most popular programs are general studies, pre-nursing, and business. That's what we continue to see the most interest and enrollment in from our students. We're excited that our bachelor's of applied science degrees continue to grow. Starting this winter, we are anticipating SACS approval to be able to launch our Homeland Security and Emergency Management Program. And we also celebrated the graduation of 55 BAS graduates. So that, that program has just really taken off and gained good interest from our students. So this is probably one of my favorite aspects of the college, and in my opinion, it's us putting our money where our mouth is when we talk about start here, go anywhere. So our, our articulation agreements are agreements that we work on with four-year institutions, colleges, and universities across the US to be able to provide our students with a pathway. When they wrap up their associate's degree with us, they will go on and continue that bachelor's degree. So we have 50 of these agreements, and 44 of those guarantee our students admission as long as they complete, successfully complete that associate's degree. We are so proud of our role in this community, and we're even more proud to be getting back to some version of a new normal. We're proud to say that our Corps of Cadets is back out into the community, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. The Milledgeville campus has recently partnered with the Salvation Army to establish a Technology Resource Center. The Salvation Army sort of identified a need for a local community or apartment complex that was within walking distance of the center, that the folks who were living over in that area had a real hurdle with access to technology and internet. So they reached out to us and said, you know, "Do you have a way that you can help meet this need?" And we said, "We'll figure it out," and we were able to do that and set up a really nice resource center that we, we anticipate that'll grow, and hopefully other community-based organizations will become involved. We are happy that we are figuring out how to have activities and programs in a way that upholds COVID safety best standards. It has really forced or encouraged us to be creative and think outside the box. Our Fine Arts Program is doing just that. They just held their first during COVID or post-COVID, however you might say it, event. They hosted a Quarantine Cabernet where, instead of a traditional audience, they're in the Gold Scene Center, they livestreamed the event, and it had over 1,700 views, which is, which just trumps any online viewing goal we've had before. So we were excited for this performance, excited that we could find a way to make it work and, and know that we can successfully do, do more of those types of activities. We are still really enjoying some strong enrollment and interest in the Corps of Cadets. We have welcomed a new professor of military science, Jerry Landrum, to our campus. We are excited to partner with this ROTC program with the Corps of Cadets and the junior college. We anticipate stronger recruitment focus on, for that ROTC program. And Colonel Kraft, our Executive Director of the Lake Country Region, is working with the Georgia General Assembly to make sure the state service opportunity is well-known about across the state and that those students have the opportunity to take advantage of that great, great program. So I mentioned that we've got our cadets back out in the community. We have recently returned to Comfort Farms. We were really happy to sort of see some back-to-normal activity for those students. It's a great partnership that our students have come to really enjoy and look forward to. So we, we hope as we move forward that we can find other avenues in the community that we can safely, upholding these safety measures, get our students back out there. In particular, we are looking to revitalize or relaunch our Civic Leader Fellowship Program. So if any of you are not familiar with that, that is an opportunity where our cadets who are interested in the fellowship would be matched with a governmental agency locally here and have the opportunity for some real hands-on learning experience. So if any of you are interested in mentoring a young cadet that has interest in future government or community work, we'd love to talk to you and, and help some of these folks get, get placed here in Milledgeville and do some good learning.
Yeah, key one there, too, is the federal government will give us money to pay them to work for you. For some, so, I mean, if you wanted somebody on the city council, a young man or woman, to come up there and work, you know, part-time supporting the city council somehow, or whatever it is in the community, the federal government gives us money to pay our civic leaders to be able to go out and do those things in the community, and it's free of charge, obviously, to whomever employs them. And it's just that, Tiffany said, "We just want you to mentor them."
True win-win. I don't know how many of those, it's so easy to come by.
The city manager made a note of that, by the way.
Awesome. I'll follow, I'll follow up with you afterward.
Good, good.
Yeah, make a connection there. Very good. Most of you or many of you may have seen, we recently celebrated the retirement of Burt Williams, our longtime athletic director and head football coach. So, so we had, we enjoyed a nice farewell to him. And we have welcomed Rob Manchester as the interim athletic director and football coach. We are so excited. Tomorrow, our cross-country team heads off to their national competition championship, where they will try to bring home their first-ever national title. We've been real excited to, to see them be successful so far. They are our only sport truly competing this fall. They were a great sport to work with, to figure out how we can have sports in COVID and be safe in that way. All of our other sports have had some scrimmages and practices, but most of their games have been postponed to the spring. So all eyes on cross-country here at GMC. All right. Just as our college, our Corps of Cadets and our athletics program brings students from all over the state and a few from even, even further to Milledgeville, we, we're really proud of, of the impact that we have here in this county and in this community and the greater area. So our friends over at Hanover Research has anticipated or estimated that our contribution to Baldwin County is over $70 million. And that translates into jobs, which is, you know, everybody's question is about jobs and being able to provide that. So we have 540 employees here in the local community that are serving either at the institution here at the college or over in the prep school. And if no one has any questions for me, I think that'll be a great segue for Ms. Grant to talk to you all a little bit about their successes over in the prep school.
Tiffany, before we go to Pam, this is Hank. Could you tell us a little bit more about the Technology Resource Center and how that's working?
Absolutely. So Cynthia Edwards reached out to us, and I don't know if you've been over there somewhat recently, but they have moved the shopping area sort of to what it used to be, really kind of that loading area, and they've made a really beautiful sales floor that, that's quite large. But that left the front side of the building that faces, what is that? Would that be Hancock? That front-facing room was really a large space and left empty. And I'm not exactly sure how she determined that there was a need, knowing her. She marched herself over there and was meeting and greeting people, and she's just somebody, as y'all know, that really has her ear to the ground and, and that folks talk to and work closely with. So she, she reached out, I think, directly to General Caldwell and said, "Do y'all have any computers?" Do you want to add to that, sir?
Yeah, what I'll say is, when I first got here, she contacted me and asked me to partner with her out at Harrisburg in the Activity Center there, and for the last seven years, we've been putting, as computers get old and need replacement, we, we have continued to replenish them and keep them operational out in Harrisburg at the Activity Center there. And so, obviously, when she moved over to Salvation Army, she, she called again and said, "Hey, could we do the same type of setup and replicate that here for another community?" And so, we said, "Absolutely, I'd love to partner with you."
One of the things that we're most excited about with that, with the area of Salvation Army in particular, is that it, it's truly walking distance to campus. So some of the things that we've talked about in the future is maybe doing some financial aid workshops there in, in the Resource Center and helping folks that maybe in the past have not seen themselves as college-bound, but help connect them with some resources and, and let them just know about the opportunities that we have in the college.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, good evening, and so, I appreciate so much giving you an update on the prep school. School year 1920 was a great year for the prep school, despite the fact that we went straight to remote learning in March. Tiffany, if you want to go to the first slide. We had a lot of great milestones in 1920. We started off the year on an extremely high note because we moved into our newly constructed prep school annex and our renovated, restored Jenkins Hall. Our annex, in addition to other things, contains a cafeteria that we just desperately needed, and we certainly enjoyed it. And we moved our elementary students, the classrooms, into the renovated Jenkins Hall. And Jenkins Hall has a very special place in my heart because a few years ago, I taught my first class in Jenkins Hall, and it has just been renovated and restored really beyond my wildest dreams. And if you haven't had a chance to come and visit us and see us, please give me a call because I would love to give you a tour. And in fact, they did such a great job renovating it, Jeff Gray and our architect and team and Garbutt, that they were awarded the Georgia Trust for Historic Preservation 2020 Preservation Award for Excellence in Rehabilitation. And when you go in Jenkins Hall, there's no doubt as to why they were awarded that because, I mean, it truly is just, our students are so blessed to go in, to be able to learn in a building like Jenkins Hall. We added third grade to the prep school this year. They joined our elementary program of fourth and fifth last year. And we began last year with 751 students, which was our largest student enrollment in the history of the prep school. And everything went great, and even in March, when we went unexpectedly to remote learning, I think what we learned, we've always known that we were bulldog strong, but now it's kind of become our mantra, and our whole prep school family has really pulled together. And, you know, the times we live in are so uncertain, and things look and they feel different for both our students and our faculty and our staff, but we realize the thing that truly matters when it comes to the prep school is how much we love and care for our students and how much we still want to invest in them and help them learn and grow, that didn't change. And our passion for developing the intellect and elevating the character of the students we serve is the reason that we have the prep school, and not even a worldwide pandemic has been able to change that. Our next slide. We, of course, are always extremely proud of our AP scores, and for the third year in a row, we had a 90% or higher pass rate on all of our AP tests, our AP Bio and our AP Language, marked the eighth consecutive year that we've exceeded the state and global pass rates. And this year, our AP Calc and our AP Stats did the same thing. And this year, our AP Calc and our AP Stats did the same thing. And I think the most important thing that we're extremely proud of, and this is the first time we've ever done this, all four of our AP programs have now had one or more years with 100% pass rate. And now all four of these subjects have had at least one year where 100% of the students enrolled in the course earned a passing score on the AP exam. And we feel like the rigor of AP really prepares our students for the next level, wherever they might be, and we're so proud of our students and our teachers in our AP program. Next slide. This was our, this past year was our third year with our High Adventure Leadership Program, which is our scouting program that we actually have during the last 45 minutes of school three days a week. And it is a chance for our students to be involved in scouting, and a lot of them would not have that opportunity if they could not do it at school. And this year, we have been so excited because we have four cadets from our HALP program who have now earned their Eagle Scout as a direct result of being able to do it with our school program. And we were really thrilled that this past month, we had our first young lady receive her Eagle Scout. And she was our first female Eagle Scout, and she was one of the very first female Eagle Scouts in the nation. So we are proud of all of our Eagle Scouts that are involved in this program, but especially our young lady, who was one of the first Eagle Scouts in the nation. Now, of course, at the prep school, we love to win in whatever sport or whatever we're competing in, but most important thing that we want from our students and our coaches is we want good sportsmanship. So we were extremely honored this this past year to receive the 1920 Georgia High School Region 7A Cooperative Spirit Sportsmanship Award. This was given out by the Georgia EMC, and it's given to schools that demonstrate impeccable sportsmanship during the school year. And so we were very humbled and honored and proud of our students, athletes, and coaches for this award. Next slide. Despite the fact that we went to remote learning in March, our students just did outstanding in their extracurricular activities. Our varsity girls softball advanced to the GHSA Elite Eight. Our mixed team, for the fourth consecutive year, were state champions, and they placed third in the nation. And this year, we did participate in Raider meets, but they didn't have a state competition. They did very well. But we're actually, if, you know, things stay on track like they are now, we're headed to the national meet in February, and we're very excited. We think they're going to do very well. Our varsity boys and girls basketball, both advanced to the Georgia High School Elite Eight. And as far as we can tell from our records, that is the furthest our girls have ever gone. So we're extremely proud of them also. Our fine arts continues to shine. Our one-act play won the Georgia High School Area Championship for the six years since 2013, and we were state runner-up to be state champs. And our literary team captured the Georgia High School Area Literary Literary Championship for the ninth consecutive year, and we were very proud that we qualified to go to state in all 12 categories. And we were actually supposed to host state the weekend that everything was closed down for COVID. But as always, the thing that we're most proud of is that all of these accomplishments in the world that begins at 3:15 are over a wide variety of areas, not just one thing. Sports, military, academics, and fine arts. Next slide. Our Class of 2020 was another outstanding class. We had 54 graduates, and we had 100% graduation rate for the 10th consecutive year, and we're very proud of that. 94% of our Class of 2020 matriculated to a post-secondary institution this fall, and 83% of them went to a Georgia school. 70% of the graduates earned the Georgia's Hope Scholarship. And then we, as you can see, we had 80% of our students enrolled in our dual enrollment program. You can see how many classes and college quarter credit hours they earned. And we were absolutely thrilled that seven of our students earned their associate degree at the same time that they received their high school diploma, which is just, you know, so helpful for these families and gives those, and it gives those students such a step up when they go to college. So we were very proud of them. And the class, the students in the class represented students that were on 12 state championship teams. Nine of them were Georgia High School, and three were Raider. And then we had four individual Georgia High School state championship titles. And one of the things that we're most proud of is this was the sixth consecutive class to establish a class of scholarship. And this is a way, of course, for them to leave a legacy and provide financial assistance and give the opportunity to another student that they had. And so we're just very proud of the class of scholarship and the way that our students embrace making sure that other students have the opportunities that they have. Last slide. Well, this year, you know, this, back in March, we didn't know where we would be now, but we actually could not be happier with where we are now. We, from the beginning of the pandemic, we really felt strongly that we felt when we could safely bring our students back safely to in-seat learning, that's what we felt was best for our students. And when General Caldwell developed the five-step program that he told you about, we felt like, we felt really good about bringing our students and our faculty and staff back. Like he said, we did it in increments. We started on June 1st with summer school. We only had about 20 students. And then that went well. And then the 1st of July, we brought back our fine arts camps for grades 3 through 12. And then the last two weeks in July, we brought back our Bulldog Blast, which is where our leadership for our middle school and our high school battalions come and train. We also brought back our band camp. That worked well. So we began our year as planned on August 7th with everyone in-seat. And we believe this has only worked as well as it has because everybody embraced that five-step program, all of our stakeholders, from our faculty, staff, students, and especially our parents. And we really truly believe the support of the institution and everyone buying into that program is why, you know, today, we stand for the last two weeks with nobody in quarantine and no positive COVID cases. Now, our enrollment was down. This would have been our highest enrollment ever with 759 students, but we had some families who were nervous about coming back. And since we don't have an online option, for the first three weeks of school, we allowed our families, if they felt more comfortable, to withdraw their students, and we gave 100% of their tuition and fees back. And we let them leave a $500 deposit, and we guaranteed their spot in either January or in next August. And you can see that we started the year with 692 students. You see the breakdown. We've got about 25 of them coming back in January. Most of the rest of them have committed to come back in August. So we feel like that everybody needs to make the best decision for them, that this was a way for us to keep our families and, you know, also honor the way they felt about coming back to in-seat learning at this time. Once again, we have more girls by just a little bit than boys this year with the 51-49% ratios of girls and boys. We're still at about 77% Caucasian and 23% minority. And we're also about the same. We've got about 77% of our students are Baldwin County residents, and the rest of them come from about eight surrounding counties. And the future looks very bright for the prep school. We've got 105 students who are registered in our Future Bulldog Program for future years. Next year, our third grade is already 90% full, and we've got students registered as far out as 2027. And in addition to having in-seat learning, we've had all of our fall sports and activities. We've done it in increments. We've been very safe. And now we're beginning our winter sports the same way, and we just could not be more blessed. So that is my report, bearing any more questions.
Well, hearing none, I will thank y'all for being here with us tonight. Thank you for being, doing this remotely. But it seemed to go off without any technical glitches, and that's always a good thing. But we appreciate what y'all do in our community. Appreciate you being a part of our community, and I appreciate you coming to to tell us about it each year when you come. Tiffany, I look forward to talking with you about the Civic Leader Fellowship Program and how the city can work with GMC on that. And I'll just, once again, ask if any council members or mayor, anybody have any questions or comments for these folks?
I don't have a question, but I would like to express my appreciation and gratitude for you all coming to present that to us. And I know it takes time to put that type of information together, but that's a wonderful report.
It is.
And just want you to know how much we appreciate everything that you all are doing for our community. And thank you so much for your hard work.
And I second that emotion, Ms. Chan.
Yes, I think I let General Caldwell know that, too.
I am really impressed.
Yeah, whenever he sends out his emails, he's like, always let him know how much I appreciate him sending that and let him know that we are reading those emails.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your reinvestment back into our community. I think that is as strong as anything that you do, is, you know, offering the educational opportunities and the things that you do offer for our community, but then turning around and the things that you do back within our community. I just think that is, that's top-notch. And it is very much indicative of the type of institution that you aspire to be and are.
Right, because I think it was like, what, 70.7 million back to the community?
Oh, and that's, that's just through payroll and things of that nature. But I'm talking about and actually coming back out into the community and the things that they're involved with and the the Computer Center in itself, and this being the second one that they've, that they've done and invested in. But those, those type things, and not only that, but the opportunity that, that if I'm hearing things right, that some of the students are having the opportunity through this government-type work program to be able to find jobs within the community.
Oh, yeah.
That's, that's one thing that, that all of us as council members, we try so hard to, as well as the commission, to, to have economic opportunity. And it is, for the last decade, has just been a, a, just a terrible situation, bottom line, unfortunately. And a lot of our youth leave. And, and we understand that. They, they have better opportunities. But hopefully, as time goes on, we can all continue to work together and make this a place to stay.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much, guys. And one more thing, General, I'll change your name on your Zoom. Stephanie's just not becoming of you.
And I will fix. I do, and I will fix.
And as always, y'all know, as the mayor, I appreciate everything that you do. I often get, get the opportunity to say that to you guys and not just what you give back. And I share with you the beautification that you've added to the city of Milledgeville. We thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Well, thank y'all. We want to ask y'all to hang around for everything else. If you're welcome to, if you'd like to, but we, we know, we know you may have had a long day, so if you all want to sign off, we actually are going to go into closed session here in a few minutes anyway to talk about some things. So thank y'all again, and if there's anything we can do to help y'all, please don't hesitate to let us know.
Thank you.
Thank you, Hank. Thank you.
Jay Bentley, you gonna log off?
Evidently, Jay's just listening.
Well, I can, as, as the big dog, I can remove him, so.
Oh, no, that is bad.
Yeah, he did, he did. Actually, let me say, as the big dog of this Zoom meeting, that's what I was referring to, not big dog in general. But I do want to mention two quick things. You have in your packet tonight, the first read of an ordinance that was put together on renaming of city streets and facilities. I realized early on, this was something we needed to look at and was able to, to put this information together. So please look through that. There's one thing that I would bring to your attention that I would ask you specifically to think about and let us know if you want to change it before passage. There is a part in there that says that the mayor and city council will offer the opportunity for public input on the proposed renaming. If you all would, think about how in-depth you want that to be, if you want it to be just a, a, a general communication with, with people, sharing that with you one-on-one, or if you would like for us to put some formality into it and it actually be a true public hearing, like a rezoning request where it's advertised and all those kinds of things. We can certainly beef that part of the ordinance up a little bit. But anything else in there that you see that you'd like to change or talk about, obviously, please feel free to give me a call and, and we can talk about it, and I can let you know what our thought process was based for the things that we put in there. Secondly, we've got some board appointments to be, hopefully be made before the end of the year. I'm gonna, I will email you all a list of, of what those are. We actually have two that are kind of, uh, in dire straits now in terms of getting some more people on those boards. That's the Planning and Zoning Board, and especially the Board of Zoning Appeals. So be thinking about people that, that may be interested in serving on those boards that you can bring forth. The Board of Zoning Appeals is, is in dire need of people. We, we actually probably would not be able to hear a zoning appeal right now if we needed to. So please think about who those are. We will be happy to contact them, let them know what's, what's required of them. The other one that will be kind of new is the two city appointments to the Central State Hospital Local Redevelopment Authority Board. We will have two due to Senate Bill 512. And the mayor and I have had some conversations about that. And I emailed Quay and Mike today to get some thoughts from them on that. So I will share that information with you when that time comes up. I do also have one question from Stephen Hauser. Carl Conseno is on the library board. There's nothing in his bylaws or in the state requirement that an individual be a resident of the county to be on the library board. Carl has moved to Washington County, but he obviously still has his business here in Milledgeville. So if you all have any, any comments about that, please let me know if you want to, to make that change. He actually, if I believe I'm remembering right, that he is in his final term, and that term will be up in December of 2021. So let me, let me know your thoughts about that, either by phone call or through email. And with that, Mayor, I need about eight minutes or so.
Eleven minutes.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Ms. Chambers.
I just said you need about 11 minutes.
I'm gonna try to take eight. I need about eight minutes in closed session just to share a couple of things with y'all.
I have a question on those board appointments. Don't mail, but does she already have some resumes that could be shifted to us as well so that council can look over those?
To be honest with you, I don't know, but I'll check with her and see.
Well, we've had some in the past.
Okay.
And it was one appointment, Mr. Bowe, that I really should have made tonight, which was on the Housing Authority, was to put Mr. Clark.
Randy Clark.
That's a reappointment, isn't it? Yeah, I needed to have made a reappointment of him because it was this month. Do this one.
And we can do it on the 24th.
You can amend the agenda.
Yeah.
Or are we gonna?
You can amend the agenda and do it tonight.
For Housing Authority, we don't, I mean, she could just.
You can just do that. You, you don't have to do.
And you, what you would be doing is announcing that you have appointed him, reappointed him.
We don't even have to amend the agenda for that.
Yeah, because there's no vote required.
Right.
Okay. I'm just gonna make that as notation that you have appointed him, correct?
Reappointed.
Reappointed, yes, ma'am.
I actually thought that was the next meeting.
They need to be able to operate.
That's all I have, other than going into closed session for just a few minutes, please.
Okay. All right, then. Nothing else on the manager's report. I need a motion for us to be able to go in closed session. I need a motion for us to be able to go in closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
It's time we'll come out of regular session and go into closed session.
I need to ask for a vote.
All right, I need an entertaining motion to come out of closed session and return back into open session, please. Madam Mayor, make a motion that we come out of closed session and go back into open session at this time.
Second.
I second.
The motion is second, put it all around.
Mr. Chambers? Mr. Chambers? He has disappeared from the screen.
Oh, yeah, I couldn't get unmuted. Aye.
Mr. Mullins? Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Schenholster?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Did you say aye?
We didn't hear you, Dr. Lee.
She said aye.
I read lips.
All right, we officially out of closed session, back into regular session, at this time, I'm entertaining a motion to adjourn if nothing else be on our agenda for our city, our council work session. So moved.
Second.
Meeting adjourned.